We've called this the temporary meeting of the North Manchester County Council. We welcome everyone in the room. Appreciate your attendance. Are there any changes to attend it? All right, the agenda is approved. We have minutes to consider from August 6th, 2025. Move through.
Second.
Second, we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. We have two opportunities within our agenda for any visitor comments. This is the first opportunity. If we would like to address council, we ask that you approach the podium. Give your name and your address. We'd like for you to keep your comments to two minutes. And any questions will be addressed at our next regular meeting.
On square 116 West Main Street. I'm just curious as to whether or not there's going to be any reply to this stellar display of affection from one of the town's employees that happened a few days ago. We were all made aware of it, but as of now, there's been no response from the town as to whether or not this is appropriate conduct for a town employee. So this is Cody Cook over at Hux flipping people off in uniform. So just want to say that. The other thing is, I understand that there is a water sewer ordinance, change, fine rate change, et cetera. And I'm hoping that as you slide in an additional tax, because our taxes have gone up, you know, significantly, especially with with water, that you'll explain why we're all of a sudden going to see now a fire district tax? Is that an additional on top of the water meter and the sewer changes that are taking place? So I'm hoping you'll explain that. I know you don't answer questions. You don't like to answer questions because that's called accountability.
You answer questions at the next regular meeting.
But hopefully you'll address that.
Anyone else?
I just want to know a little bit more about the town. So we should work that.
Amen.
Bowery, Parkson, I think that's 403 State Road 13 West. North Manchester. First off, I want to thank the town council for all the work you do. I know it's a tough job and everything, but there are several citizens that live on social security and low income residents that live here in North Manchester. People cannot afford even raising their water bill, let alone their life bills are going up, the property taxes are going up, groceries, everything's falling out of it. You are voted into office to not only think about how much funding the town's spending, but to think about the effect it will have on the residents. I would like to ask the question of where is the water improvement fund for the new meter reading scanners? And are you using any of it to offset the cost of the improvements for the water meters? The next thing is the fire protection. So I did some checking. We already pay fire protection through our property taxes. I don't quite understand why you need to add another thing for property taxes onto our water bill. We are already paying an EMS fee that started where back when Life Meth was here. When Life Meth left, we start paying it. It never was explained why that was so. So I did, I did look it all up because I don't go into a meeting unless I have all my ducks in a row. And the fire protection is typically funded, like I said, through township, city, or special fire protection districts. I don't know of any districts, fire protection districts in the Wabash County area. But the breakdown by taxing goes by, this is for North Manchester, basically to township. Wabash County supports what countywide services such as county government, courts, and law enforcement. Just for township, funds township level operations such as fire protection and public assistance, which any firefighters and first responders here tonight, I want to thank you on the great job in getting that little boy found today. That was excellent. The town of North Manchester covers town services, including town government, local roads, parks, and recreation. The Manchester Community Schools allocate funding to the local public school corporation. North Manchester Public Library supplies library system. These are all things that come from our property taxes. So I don't see the need for us residents to be increased in water and turn around and do a fire protection also at the same time, unless there's a good explanation for both of them. The firefighters do an excellent job with their fundraisings and what they do for our services here in town. And I pray to all of the North Manchester Town Council to not approve the raising of the water in the present time and to not add fire protection when it already is being changed, charged in our residential property taxes. And I would love to thank you for letting me speak.
Would you mind the name of the top of your deck with us?
Yeah, if you don't mind my husband's name on it because he was supposed to come, but he had therapy this morning at the new place in town.
Help us when we provide answers to your questions. Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on, we have a public hearing this evening for our 2026 budget. I will open the public hearing. I will ask Kerry to provide an overview. And then if anyone has any public comments on that topic, we will be happy to hear those. Kerry?
The 2026 budget is what is for you. We're all aware of changes in Senate Bill 1 and multiple pieces of legislation that have affected municipal governments. Our advisors and the DLGF is very conservative right now. All of our estimates are very conservative. Our circuit breakers right now are estimated to go from 110,000 last year to over 300,000 in the coming year. Those are direct deductions from our budget based on property taxes and the properties that we are assessing. We know there are going to be changes in the next legislative session. So we're being conservative, but yet aware of the changes that we're going to be facing as as the next few years come through and that legislation is is reworked. We are seeing a really positive increase in our assessed value. The building that we're doing and the houses, we are seeing about an 18% increase in our assessed value. That helps keep our rate down. So when this budget is worked through the DLGF, our rate should be very similar to what it is this year.
Any, this is a time for public comment. Is there any comments from anyone regarding the 2026 budget?
So how much is the budget going up for 2026?
How much is?
I mean, you haven't provided copies of it, right? So.
About 800,000.
We'll do the equivalent to 100 percentage. And where, again, where are those increases happening? Are they salary lines? Are they? What departments?
So a lot of it's equipment.
Equipment? In what department?
General. And each does more equipment. Increases this year.
We're spending additional $800,000 and we don't even know what it's for?
Do you know what it's for? Would you like me to do a line by line?
Well, you haven't provided a copy to provide for us to look at, right? So.
It's sent out in a packet.
What packet?
It goes in the classified, those are invited to be requested. It's on Gateway.
So so what is the $800,000 for?
Increases across the board and necessary expenditures.
Okay, salaries?
Yes.
Okay, how much is salary?
I did not prepare each one.
Any council increases? They've already had 76% increase.
Over what time grid?
Over the last six years. Oh, I can check it. 10 years ago, it's $4,600, you get $10,000 a year now. That's that's a significant increase, okay? Water bills used to be $46 and now 76 are going up another 15 plus you're going to have a fire tax on. So it's going to go up to over $100. So it's not wrong. Okay, well, then we can sit down and go over it. Let's go over the numbers. But you don't answer questions, so you know, you don't want to sit down and actually get into fact of data. So I'm asking over the over this, with this budget increase, you're spending additional $800,000 and what is it for? So where can I get a copy of the budget? It's on Gateway. That's your answer.
And you're explaining to the client to get it on Gateway?
He knows how to get on Gateway.
Anyone else wish to make a comment on the 2026 budget? We will close the public hearing. Move on to the regular agenda. We have no unfinished business. We need to move on to new business. The first consideration is the general ordinance number six, the 2026 budget on the first reading. We have, each ordinance has three readings. So this document does not pass the budget. It only introduces it. And then we have two more, two more readings to go through before it before it becomes official. Kerry?
General ordinance number six, 2025, be ordained by the town council, the town of North Manchester, that for purposes of North Manchester Civil Town to be year ending December 31st, 2026, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named for purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated or provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the North Manchester Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget form for being for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance should be shoved in full force of effect from and after its passage, with approval by the town council of the town of North Manchester.
Move approvals.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve general orders number six, the 2026 budget on first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. The week of September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. And the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are represented here this evening by Tammy Wise, have asked that we read a proclamation in that regard into the text. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated in September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, James Smith, by virtue of the authority vested in me as council president of the town of North Manchester, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities that privilege involves. It's dated this third day of September, 2025. We appreciate the Daughters of the American Revolution providing that for us. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just on the behalf of the Francis Loughlin chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution, I just would like to thank the entire town council for acknowledging the importance of the Constitution to our country. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Three, water infrastructure bid approval. Adam, who had your bid opening last Thursday. This is a project that we've been really talking about for two and a half years from starting with our asset management plan that's required by the state. Amendments or PR to the water projects to know how are we keeping our infrastructure? Just like at home or a car, things have its useful life and they must be replaced. Many of our water lines are 80 years or more old. We know a lot of brave areas, we've did a lot of due diligence on identifying these areas and to be replaced to continue to have good water service to our customers without disruption. Additionally, we have EPA mandates for let service line replacements that we have taken a look and sent surveys out. We've identified some other areas with our water meters that we've addressed. So this project's been talked about for a lot. We've been looking every way to minimize impact on the customers. Working with SRF, we've got some good news to share on as far as that is on some of the debt. And I'll run through kind of a list of the project areas and then Jeremy can say the the bid results that we received. So we've got water main with services that needs replacing, State Road 114 West from Strausford, New York to State Road 30. So basically a good chunk of everything that's under the highway on the west side of town. State Road 114 East from the bridge, which is being replaced to the corporate limits, including Second Street extensive that extended. That area's been a problem child for many years, a lot of breaks there. State Road 114 West, West Main Street from Down Street to Theater. Wayne Street from Main to Fifth Streets. Fifth Street from Wayne to East. East Street from Fifth to College Avenue. We have all new meter reading system through the whole entirety of the town. So pretty encompassing project, but these are areas that'll help get back them for the distribution system, upsizing our water mains. And this is, we have a lot of small and adequate water veins that do not provide enough fire perfection service flow coming out of this side of it. So this will greatly improve those areas that we have. So Jeremy, would you like to give the bigger results on this project?
Yep, so this bid opening was just last week. We had three bidders ranging from a little bit of nine million, 20,000 up to just around 12 million and 700,000. So three bids are, engine investment was nine and a half million. So the low bid was just below that. The contractor that had the low bid was Atlas Excavating. I did ask internally, they were aware of the few projects that are in the office. And they just completed the the main water main. It's all, thing went well, so they seem to be doing a pretty good job. So they seem like they're capable of performing the work. And what I would ask of the council tonight is accepting the bid and issuing a notice of intent to award the projects. What's the goal then, awarding the next council meeting officially once we get all the posted documents that's around?
This project two was talked about at our public open house back on April 9th. We invited everybody to come and see the project areas, ask questions about what the project will be and how it could impact them. Anticipate start time of the maybe spring.
So the loan closing is scheduled for November 12th. We have a 90 day period. This kind of sure will take a while. So the first part of project milestone one is starting at North Wayne, going north. That'll be starting roughly around February through to the end of summer. And then no earlier than April 1st, the west section out here will start in October. And then there'll be a gap in time just because of the bid work. So we stay waiting in that contractor. And then we'll start back up April 2027 to finish the e-session now. And then they'll go from April, no earlier than April through July, August, if they don't have quick.
And your motion, move approval? Moved and seconded to accept the water infrastructure bid from Atlas. Any discussion?
I would like to point out to people that maybe have not been aware of this project. We've been saying that they've talked about it for a very long time. A lot of these improvements are not are not just pretty things. They're 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 things that's to the safety of our own people who are going out into the weather, fixing things that are breaking underground, pipes that are all of a sudden bubbling up. It's also in the long run going to save our water department money because they are losing water. You know, our old, I think, motherland told me 100 years ago that we had pipes that are over 100 years old. And those things have to be replaced, otherwise they're costing us money. So the steps that we're taking are are for the good of our peoples. They sort of save them money in the long run. It's painful, but all of us are paying the same increases. In the long run, it's going to save that money. It's better for our cordages and it's better for our families. So spending money is is not something that takes much.
The, I'd like to commend the people who've been focused in the room, particularly those who are not in the room. People working on this project, Ryan and his crew, Adam and Kerry and and others and our partner Commonwealth. Everybody has done their due diligence, as Adam said. And you know, we're not, we're, this bid and and this work is not a lot of fluff. It's stuff that's necessary and just like any anything that you own that after a point in time, you have to do things to keep it up. And this is, this is what we're doing, so. Anyways. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, thank you, Jeremy. Market Street Water Main Project, did approve.
Speaking on the same theme as the other project, the Martha Street, South Martha Street Bridge is being replaced by the county for grants and pay received. In doing so, we have to relocate our water vein that is under the river, which is too close to the project area. We've been talking about this one for probably three years. Sign work and so forth has been delayed since time by the NOD. Early on, obviously, we had a main break that's still broke. It's under the river, in a pretty difficult position to where right now we don't have the loop. We have water going out and around, on the creek road back up. We don't have that loop again. Thankfully, within the contract, the county is going to pay for a good majority of the relocation costs. But we did have to bid this in our, we had a bid under ours contract, but then they'll reimburse us for that. Just kind of how it ended up. Framers work, or we were. Fortunately, I had one bidder, but it is something I have relocated by March of 2026, by the time they start. Then moving that bridge, that bridge, they came at 368,702 dollars. The Fox contract, and they were the loan bid. It is about 120,000 over estimates. I don't know if it's because of timing. They see some challenges with it, but essentially it's a borderline all the way from right across the street from Mr. Davis. Probably 20 some feet deep by the time it hit the parking lot and go and put underneath the river or not, right outside and make the connection. It'll be good in the long run to have it done. Obviously, we have the one that is still existing now, but it was a project that we didn't initiate. But I think it will still be a benefit to have, and so we will see. All reimbursement we can from the county and whatever balance we'll come up with. So I would ask for motion to the Bronx contracting. And I think that's still trying to get it done yet before the year before this call is.
Move approval? Moved and seconded to approve the bid for the Market Street Water Main Project. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Water rate ordinance, general ordinance number seven on the first reading. Adam?
Do you want to read it first, Kerry?
Sure. In order to meaning the rates and charges for the use of its services rendered by the waterworks system of the town of North Manchester, ordinance number seven, 2025. Whereas the town of North Manchester is the owner and operates a waterwork system for actually water to said town, its inhabitants and users of the town's environment. And whereas the town council now finds the existing rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the waterworks of said town are insufficient to produce sufficient revenue to pay for all of the necessary expenses incident to the operation of the utility, including maintenance costs, operating charges, upkeep, repairs, depreciation, legal expenses, interest charges on bonds, and other obligations. To provide a secret fund for litigation of bonds and other obligations, provide a debt service reserve for bonds and other obligations, to provide advocate funds for working capital and provide funds for making extensions and replacements. And the existing rates and charges should be increased. Now therefore, be it ordained by the town council, the town of North Manchester, there shall be and there is hereby established for the use of and services rendered by the waterworks system of the town of North Manchester, the scheduled rates and charges based on the use of water supplied by said waterwork system and so forth in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Rates and charges are due to users whose meter installation is outside corporate limits of the town of North Manchester shall be 150% of the rates charged based on exhibit A. But the rates herein approved shall provide for reasonable return on the water utility plan from town of North Manchester and such other legal and necessary expenses as provided in ICA 1.538. All ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby appealed. The ordinance shall be full force of effect from and after its passage.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve on first reading, general ordinance number seven, which is the water reordinance.
I'll go into more depth on it and hopefully I can answer some of the questions valid about what we're what we're doing here. So as you just witnessed, we just approved a full project with the town. I think our debt will end up being about nine and a half million dollars that we'll have to have an obligation. Good news, it was going to be about twelve and a half. Thankfully, through the SRF, the state program was unexpected. They gave us a $300,000 payable loan when they came through a package. Even to go to more extent, they said that we would receive the lowest interest or lower interest in a traditional loan by program versus a cool one. We were able to qualify, maybe at 10 communities that applied from over 100. We scored within that fund warning. And so we're going to get a better rate than most others that are platter. So it's great for that because they can consider it impacted that one that the constituents that would have. And so there's a small 400,000 dollar piece that will be interest free, which reflects some light service line. So those are all good news that we got from the state. And I don't know if you remember, SRF, that's about as low of interest rates that you can get. So we went that route, thanks for Commonwealth, good relationship with them and kind of working with the process and and helping them get its best package that we can. So in general, looking at kind of what those rates are, we have a scheduled rates that you can share with those that propose rates. Currently, as a minimum, five days per three quarter meter, the rate for 3,000 gallons is. Um currently, as a minimum, five days by three quarter meter, the rate for three thousand gallons is twenty five dollars and sixty three cents for water. As long as you throw water. Um it will increase as of right now about fifteen dollars to forty dollars and dime cents. Um that could still go down because S R F will release the newest rates until October one. Yeah, and all rates will do. So there there is a little bit of added interest rates for these that will end anticipation as it would go up, but there's a chance that it could lower some. Uh so that's in general, there's different classifications. Um so one that will follow them different heater size. Uh one thing that we did do and had in place for a while, and Valerie may know about this, the tiered system, the more water you can use or discount E D A. That is something that when our financial advisors, they tried to look at and they said we do huge discounts to large uh volume users, and that's not really something that's seen as much anymore, uh that much. So what that does is puts more of the financial burden on the residents and not the heavy users. The town council, we've considered what others are doing and thought we need to kind of level the playing field a little bit. So we did uh cost of service analysis, and they determined that too much is on the residents, so we're shifting some of that burden back on the larger users. Still a tiered system, we're going from a six years to three, but they're a lot tighter. For example, right now, a three thousand gallon user, the first three is eight dollars and fifty four cents per thousand gallons. And if you lose over two hundred thousand, you're down to four dollars and twenty five cents. It's almost a half the cost of the The new rate will have six dollars and eighty five cents for the first ninety thousand gallons and anything over two hundred is six dollars and thirty one cents. So very similar costs, kind of leveling that out. So more of the rate increase will hit the larger users, um more than much residents. So most of the increase is to cover the bond debt that we have incurred with the project. Um. Mentioned about the public, the public housing, we've talked about this project, so we've been talking about for a while. Back in twenty twenty three, we updated our asset management plan. See, qualified for S R F funding now, you must have an up-to-date asset management plan, which essentially says you know where all your useful life is on all your equipment and all your planning and all your utility pipes. What you don't do about replacing them? You can't sit on that. If you don't have an asset management plan and you're making efforts to do it, they are not going to give you low rates. You have to do the bond market, pay higher rates. So we had to do those things, required our desks to get eligible for S R F money. So we did that, um updated that, and then we had a P R to kind of say, what are our infrastructure, whether it's the treatment plant, what do we need to do to make those and and then we need to do those. So really following our asset management plan, replacing those that we've identified as critical, we're going to be thinking something about that. Um the project, again, is about two miles worth of state water main. Two miles is a small nano water main, because we probably got roughly thirty miles. So we're taking a small bite out of it, but we've um looked at every areas and gone to the water department. Where's all our water main breaks at? When they're doing those breaks, what's the condition of the pipe as you see it? Um max over those, we have more areas might consist of five pipe that's more breaking more than others. I'm not sure what's wrong with that material. Um we know where fire flows not good, we have a hydraulic study on on checking fire flows uh several years ago. We know what four inch mains that provide water um adequate fires suppression from those hydrants. So we're upsizing to make sure we get that fire flow, which should hopefully help with insurance rates in the homes. Um replacing our lead and galvanized surfaces, that's in mandate. Um we have to be taking steps to replace those as we find them. So we're replacing any that we have identified along this two mile stretch that we know need to be replaced. And that will be a benefit to homeowners to have that, and they can opt in to have us replace those and some could opt out. But I think we only had ones that didn't respond, and everybody else wants those replaced, as we're required to replace them. Um you know, the automatic leak system, um I know this is something a lot of communities have been switching our current system, and Ryan, if you probably speak to this, it's been a headache. Um we're running out of technology that can support the meters that we have in the reading system. Probably still the same system and maybe you're with the town.
Well, they talked about the readers for that twenty years.
Yes. And so we're, we've been borrowing guns from other communities to get us by, guns that do the readings and the handhelds. And it's not even supported now, and I think we're down to what, two that still work, three maybe?
We had nine, nine guns at one point, of which most of them are borrowed. We have two left still work. So but the technology ever supported, so we can get it fixed.
So so we're, we're on our last leg of that, so we're making the transition to this automatic read where um the ladies at the office and I've included some papers in the packet as well, what the new reading um system has been doing, where they get a reading. They got a report every morning, and that will say he might have potential leak in their house. Who has a pipe burst, and it's amazing what we're finding with customers. And I'll give one example I was going to talk about later, but we had a a customer, a business owner on Main Street that um Jessica, our office lady, had an alert that said uh possible leak in the in the house. And it was like forty gallons and and an hour with what was leaking. So she called him up and said, it appears I just had a leak started yesterday. It's using land more gallons and used the whole night overnight. I assumed he wouldn't be up to business then. This individual looked around and said, oh, I went to the basement. I didn't use that toilet before it was running the basement. He said, I never use that, but one time a month. Had we not caught it and told him that next day, he would have had another thirty days of leaking water that he would have had to pay several hundred dollars worth of water bill, and we would have said, sorry, we can't help you. And every day we're seeing that, and that just saved him hundreds of dollars by notifying him, and he thanked us for it. And so we're, we're finding those things, and I feel like it's time to get customer service. He's helped the customers and also helps do work tickets, rebouts, all those things that our guys have been handling through different system. Um and and you can give data, somebody wants to see a thirty day readout of what the water usage is on this day. We can do that printed out and and show them what that is. So it's really not a winded this water recap and we can probably wind it out to the range. We found a couple of hoses on. People showed that the water jumped up and they they found that there's a hose on it before. So that's some of the benefits of this meter reading system that we have, and it won't take two guys, four days to read the meters anymore. They can do other things um that they are finding to do now. But falling around the meter, replacing guy and then instantly find and so forth. So um those are some of the big items that we're replacing with this nine million dollars and then just optimize going into a three hundred percent. Additional structure, talk about fire protection feed. Um this is not necessarily for the fire department. Um when we talk to Baker Tilly, our finance advisor, a lot of communities are showing like right now, our fire protection costs are baked into the one water utility bill. Um when you look at a water system, hydrants around there have to have water flow to them. If we only had to serve for just drinking water and uses in residential homes, we could probably get away with it two inches long down those streets and just tie them off. We don't. We have six, eight, ten and twelve inch mains because you have to have a sizable flow added with fire protection water to the areas that need it. So we have to maintain larger sized infrastructure. We have to have more water tower space. They have to have more pressure to all the different um parts of the town, particularly at the university that has fire sprinkler systems, have to have certain P S I that to work properly. All those things going into maintaining it, even though it might not be something that you can show as disaster. So that does come at a cost, the main main things, um more volume. So we're pulling out. Baker Tilly said this is a cost of service to maintain. What they're saying is fire protection increases to the system. And so that's that flat rate is saying to maintain a twelve inch main, it's going to cost X amount over time. And then you have this consumption rate. So the new bill will be broken into two. There'll be a consumption amount, which for example will be twenty dollars and fifty five cents for the five eights meter minimum. Then you'll have a twenty dollars and thirty four cents uh for the five eights meter for protection service. Both of those combined will be the forty dollars um issue rate. The torrent fire protection will be the flat rate, but will not go up. That's the standard every month. The consumption will go up and down depending on what your uses from twenty dollars. So that's how we have that new rate structure, which Huntington is doing it. I I saw recently, Baker Tilly here next month, they can talk about what they're seeing around the state. But we're just trying to identify this protection. In addition to, you mentioned about the general fund paying for this property taxes.
No, it's not the general fund. It's our property tax. We're paying for fire protection. Okay, but what I'm talking about is where is the water improvement funds? I'm not being able to find any of those funds anymore.
What the, what the balance of it is?
Yeah, every month. I mean, every month I had to move money to like the improvement, the debt services and everything from each fund. You know, for the water department, the wastewater department, the improvement, I mean for um there's another one. But anyway, I had to move those, and those were building up. And then when you had to do an improvement, John would have me transfer those funds into the water department, because we're doing a water main or something.
I can love to sit down with you and show the numbers. I think right now, we're between operating and improving fund, have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars combined. Now, if we're to save nine million dollars, it would take a while, but we still have to raise rates to save that much amount of money. So we're doing that through the debt service. Um but I can sit down with you and show you everything you have, and I can tell you since twenty twenty or materials have gone up thirty to forty percent on everything with Fox. So it's pretty hard to to save that money, particularly with all the prices given um on stuff, so.
Well, I know that we're trying to bring people into our town, okay? We've got our schools. We've got good school systems. We don't have a whole lot of industry. But if you keep raising these utilities and stuff, people are going to say, why should I go there when I'm going to Huntington? I can go to Rowan, or I can go to Akron, or over to Peru. I mean, there's been several people who put up their houses just this past week.
I would love to have a conversation with you since this is part of the agenda. Please not by the Commonwealth, and I'd love to spend the time with you and talk about those things. Next meeting, Baker Tilly is here to explain what's happening across the state um and broad view of that and kind of what they found on the studies. So um but in in the meantime, stop by Commonwealth, calling and you can Um so that's, that's kind of the basis over the water rates. Um. And we did also part of this adjustment, like I said, we the general fund, new property tax was paying the municipal high rent rental. Uh we're not going to do that from property tax now. We're just moving that fee amount to this, to this property or the fire protection. So that will, that will essentially move since the law had changed some of the funding. We're not going to have the general fund pay towards that. The rate payers will pay that now only through the rates, not through the property taxes. That's general update on rates.
We have a second. And uh as I said earlier, on uh another situation, this is the first reading. Uh it takes three readings to uh pass an ordinance, so we'll be considering the second reading uh in October. If this first reading passes, uh we'll be uh considering the second reading in October and the third reading in November. As I said, if it passes each time. Uh I just want to say that that the amount of work, again, I'm going to say it, the amount of work that's gone into uh studying all this and uh making determinations about of what needs to be done, not going, not uh everything wants to be done, but the things that need to be done, things are going to improve. And I would say that uh having good infrastructure, uh it actually draws people. Uh we have good infrastructure, uh and I think that uh when Baker Tilly comes, I think they'll be able to tell us that uh our rates are currently uh much lower than a lot of, a lot of communities and even communities that that surround us. So uh anyway, any other comments before we vote? All in favor of uh general ordinance number seven on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Thank you. Sewer use ordinance amendments, general ordinance eight on first reading.
Town of North Manchester sewer use ordinance, general ordinance number eight, twenty twenty five, an ordinance in the specific section of municipal code of the town of North Manchester. Whereas the town of North Manchester is the owner and operates a sewer work system for using sewer services to the town, its inhabitants and users of the town's environment. And whereas periodically it's necessary to update the town's ordinance with regard to sewer works. Therefore, being ordained by the town council, the town of North Manchester, Indiana, that chapter fifty three of the town code shall be amended as follows. This ordinance is twenty one pages long. Nobody wants me to read it. If I can read it, it's available in my office.
Second.
Moved and seconded to uh approve the sewer use ordinance amendments, general ordinance number eight on first reading. Sewer use ordinance is required document that I then has the town and the community that has a municipal waste uh sewer system. Uh basically governs what people can put down in sewer, um what type of enforcement that we can do essentially, if somebody's putting something that's non-compatible with treatment plan. And has many other things as far as how sampling can go, grease traps, all the different things that can basically, that's in a protect and that resource river, and then how we are to treat that water, what enforcement they can do on that. So since we have to do a new renewal of our N P B S permit, which allows us to discharge clean water to the river, uh treated water. Um with that item, these are sewer use ordinance, and we had Commonwealth look at, looked that over, and they found some areas that we need to bring up to speed and up update those to um current standards. Um so thus, these updates reflect all the recommended changes to I D M, Commonwealth. Um so that leaves a suggestion. I agree with all of them. Some of them just wording changes, some of them for definitions that have changed on what they did more descriptive, less descriptive, so. And like a necessary thing to satisfy I D M, and they're waiting for us to get final approval after a three reading, so we can send them the copy of the document.
Any discussion? Suppose in favor of the sewer use ordinance amendments, general orders number eight on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Thank you. Approval of sewer enforcement response plan.
In a similar fashion, because they were seen in me and every five years, we have to commit and know. There's also a guidance document that isn't an ordinance, but it's basically a policy that states if if you have a discharging company or industry that is not meeting um our parameters or violating our sewer use ordinance, that tells us how we are to approach the enforcement of the sewer use ordinance, the step-by-step um uh enforcement and letters and all that stuff, and so prior to any legal action taken. So this is just needing an adoption or if it were applicable, and then um that will become the updated policy, and I included with the packet or sending you on earlier about the what was previous and what was a change on that, so you could see what's changing. Not much has changed, but there was some wording that needed change per Commonwealth's um advisement, so.
Kind of underscores the fact that you can't get towels down the street.
Or anything like that, no.
Move approval?
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve the sewer enforcement response plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Thank you. Apex L C R S contract for Murphy Street, Adam?
This is a contract that the town will not obtain because we have a loan grant that will pay for this. Um, but we had a local comfort. Location control route survey done on College Avenue. Segment of an eight just a mile. Um, we we did not happen to contact them to do the Market Street segment from College all down to Bane Street. That is a requirement because in not fun of fun. About one point five million dollars granted to get through the stellar pathways. But they require that to be done. So we need to get that completed before it gets too cold outside and they can start doing. Whatever they need to do for that file. But it's about fifty fifteen thousand dollars from Apex. And I recommend that they do a great job for all of the assets they do for streets. So. Uh, need your approval for that contract.
So. Second. Move in second to approve the Apex, Apex LCRS contract for Market Street. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you. Eel River Commons Park architect contract for N P M.
Another contract that we will have to pay from our funds, but through the Lily Graves at Manchester University C. Um, Eel River Commons Park that we've been talking about for seven, five. It's last September. So in year now since we ended up the grant. Well, that was yeah, cop plan. So when we knew we had the money was last September. Um, so this is to hire N P M to do the architectural work. Um, this is that between seven and nine million dollar projects. Um, right now we're going to six to seven. We're hopeful with uh, maybe in the next month or so to have a. Um, conversation with the R D A up in Fort Lane to see if we can get a couple million dollars additional to be with enhanced like a one year apart. Um, out of the right now, N P M's contract for essentially the base project is seven million dollars. Um. Is for seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars for their work and that will include designed development, construction documents. Construction phase, which is kind of their oversight during that construction period. The procurement phase and then the permitting, which is probably along this part of the road. So. Uh, all the services will be covered under this seven hundred fifteen thousand dollar franchise. Don't wait, nobody will worry there.
Any approval? Move in second to approve the contract with N P M for the Eel River Commons Park architectural work. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you. And concludes our regular agenda. Sorry. I guess it does. Soil boring.
Soil boring.
Okay, we do have an item number ten. Soil boring contract for the Eel River Commons.
Part of the Eel River design work that he's done. Um, N P M needs soil boring style application. They had a few done earlier, but now they've added a pedestrian bridge as part of the plans. And sees another area they wanted to do. They need to make sure that suitable soils and they will know what they can do in that area. So this contract for nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the additional soil borer. And with um, results tested with G M B. Years, uh, so years on the short. G M B.
Testing.
Testing. That's the testing. So, um, I see the approval of that. So that's certain work that we paid to do that.
Move in second to approve the soil boring contract for the Eel River Commons. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you. Now, we move into the departmental and commission reports. We'll start with the police department.
This past month, August twenty second, Roger Mauer junior and Brian Skeens successful in the K N A office on academy. Uh, they are now getting to finish their F T O training. So hopefully here in the next few months, they'll be released. Drive patrol. Um, um, joining those two and along with Sam Allen, Tim Turflinger, they went down to the sheriff's promise to do their tater training. So now that all sort of by the current data is also just another tool that they need.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Danny. Fire to burn, but she can.
About the only thing that uh. About the only thing that stands out is we had our annual pump test done on August twenty eighth. Uh, everything passed. And we just have some minor issues on six oh one that we get need to look into, but. With that, everything's good.
Questions for Cam? Thank you, Cam. Building commissioner, Dave.
I have enough to add.
Thank you. Questions today? Thank you, Dave. Are you thinking for Medico?
I think last meeting I mentioned that they have somebody purchasing. Um, point six six acres out there in that sort of part. Um, they've since rescinded the purchase um, agreement. But they're looking at a larger plot out there. So. Um, I don't know how, but that'll move. But Medico have to move again to. Consider the new purchase agreement for a larger site. Um, definitely size of building and definitely not fully sold. Um, we'll be patient with that. Make something come out of that. So just made it that.
Hopefully more to come. Arch and Rex, any approval?
Well, we've got lots of things going on um, at the pool and the park. Um, the pickleball courts were finished today. They've been painted, striped, and the nets are up. Um, that needs to wait for um, forty eight hours until they can play on. So. Probably they'll be open by Saturday morning so people can start playing. The ribbon cutting ceremony will be September twentieth at ten A M. And uh, last Wednesday, we had the old dehumidification system removed from the top of the pool. And they are working on um. Fence duct work and working on the roof for the new system, which has been sitting in the. School parking lot uh, for about a week and a half. If you've gone by there and seen a big gray thing, that's what's going to go up on top of the roof. So. That should be placed on Friday. And we had a plaster repair company come yesterday to start. Uh, fixing the bottom of the therapy pool. And we will, we're planning to start filling the pools around September tenth or eleventh. And then we'll reopen September fifteenth, which is the first day for Manchester University's um, swim practice.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff. Yes.
And any questions for Jennifer?
And the Holderman Park um. Dedication of the American Legion is having September thirteenth from three and five.
Thanks, Cam.
Anything from Bill Wavish County? Uh, wanted to point out for Daniel Danner is October ninth. Wavash and then also Tino invited Kerry and I to attend. Uh, the company tour of Intertech projects when Congressman Rudy Dotkin came for an hour. So that was a nice quick visit with him. Like we went back to Washington and got to see the plant. Um, and I don't know, but I've got an email, maybe some of that Rick Serena is under retiring. Um, in the next um, month. So we starting to let people know that. I believe Wayne Robinson will take over as president personally. So. Thirty five years he's been here ever since he came to town. So.
R D C, um. With Matt, we approved of uh, purchasing some benches and picnic tables and. Trash receptacles for the library. Um, they came to ask us to funds to help them out, but they've been doing a lot of. Exterior improvements of the property and R D C wanting to contribute to some of their additions. Um, and then we also talked about the um, R F P phase two of Chester Heights. Chester Heights is doing very well. So want to stay on top of trying to keep lots available um, before it gets all sold and all the lots taken. Uh, so we did send that part out and looking to. Uh, I missed open R F Ps either October, December, or R D C. So. Keep ahead of that. With you.
Anything that's additional solid waste hearing?
Well. Stormwater.
Well, we did meet. Um, we're redoing ordinances. We've. Have been dealing with probably inadequate stormwater ordinance for some time and stormwater board. Especially approved of our draft ordinance that we had and Commonwealth helped us redo that to bring us up to. Uh, appropriate standards. And we have developed, had a lot of development over the years and. And previously, we really don't have an in-house engineer to review those. And so we're finding that the technical standards really weren't um, addressed. There really wasn't any. And so we need to have that adopted. So we can actually give them an email and say, and this is what it is versus. Minimal standards. So we'll be bringing that to council and coming to get that adopted and. For that. So that's all we have.
Something for Craig?
Uh, we did a lot of hot mix patch of pot holes this last month, twenty tons, which doesn't sound like a lot unless you have to shovel it off by hand. So. I felt like we're just this far behind dogs and paving miles and. And uh, fall cleanup will be October seventeenth and eighteenth. Down at the street park. You got a great task, so.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you, Craig. Ryan?
Uh, just two quick updates on a couple of projects. Uh, the meter project will write at about fifty percent as of yesterday. So about eleven hundred meters have been put in and about eleven hundred more to go. Um, hopefully a couple more months. Hopefully it gets to gold out. Um, and then the North Water Tower is all repainted. The interior was cleaned out. They said it was in pretty good shape on the interior. So. Uh, they installed what they call protection in it, which will just help for deterioration of that coating insanity. And right now it's refilled and we're just looking on a couple of samples to come back as they'll be back back in operation.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Shannon?
You know, I think all I had is uh, Niblock, the contractor was at Bethlehem lift station today working on. Removing some of the old concrete in the existing wet well. Um. Tomorrow they're going to be pouring a flat base at the bottom of that wet well. And then hopefully the new pumps will be installed on Friday and. My fingers are crossed that we'll be running on that. New lift station then hopefully by Friday afternoon. So if not, maybe Monday.
Any questions for Shannon? Thank you, Shannon. Government issues report.
Both of us tonight. So I can agree. Um. Town is looking at a new website. Um, there's a state contract that has available. So. We will report them to that transition soon. And then the other thing I pointed out in the packet of Daniel's place having a Trump retreat again in the town park lot, West Hill Town Hall. October eighteenth from five to eight. And that's a repeat event. Um, I have my head in prison last. The terminal service gets through this for sure. So if one of these point that out, they got a ton of people. And I think that's the how it's been turned out.
Any questions for Adam? Thank you. Preparation report.
We have two dockets tonight. Town docket is one million twenty two thousand three hundred seventy seven dollars and nine cents. And a utility docket of one million one hundred forty one thousand one hundred fifty six dollars and seventy two cents.
Pay our bills.
Second. Move in second to pay our bills. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you. We now have the second opportunity uh, of the evening for any visitor comments. Uh, anyone who'd like to address council at this point. Uh, the same uh, parameters as earlier. Uh, approach the podium, your name and address. And. Please keep your comments for two minutes and if you ask any questions, so we address the next regular meeting.
I just have two items for this. One, we have. Valerie Clarkson. Goysen row three, state row thirteen. If you ask me at church, what's your name? Anyway, um, we have two things. One, we have a lot of feral cats up here. And several people have gotten feral kittens now. I have rescued two of them. I placed them with maybe first out of Wavash. We need to figure out something. Whether we do a block at a time for these. Feral cats and get them do the G and R, you know, where we tap them, spay and neuter and release them. Because they do help with mice control, the balls, they help do all else. Um, and everything. So a lot of people are feeding them because they know the concrete. And I know there's a problem in Wavash and I don't want to do it there. Okay? We need to come with something up here. So. The second thing is, do you know when they're going to start the work on the Daniel first? Feral market street.
I think it's uh, twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
I heard if they sent this federal dollars, they backed up. They can't start on anything until. I think that might be a demolition that has to happen. Trees down. So most of it will happen.
I like yours. Thank you, Rob.
Pumps wire one sixteen west main. So the first thing I'd like to say is um, for a council that has a policy that says we don't answer questions. You've answered a lot of questions.
That's not true. We answered questions after they're asked.
You just answered questions today and you entered your entire dialogue.
That was a pretty simple.
Um, and and stuff like that. So a lot of them are simple, but you just choose to ignore them. You don't answer them at the next. You don't answer at all. Um, the other thing is you just passed a lot of money. You talked about how you're being fiscally conservative. Um, and yet you're not talking about any of the cost control things that you can be taking advantage of. Um, our population in town has been going down, but you've been adding police officers. So you know, the national stats at one point five to one point eight police officers per per thousand population. Which means we should have about nine. We have eleven to twelve, depending who you ask. Um, why are we spending taxpayer money on providing police services to the county? They don't pay our taxes. The taxpayers here expect those services to be provided here, not out in the county. Um, but apparently routine services are provided in the county all the time um, with Nate's blessing. And um, why are we subsidizing part of the two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year? By the way, an organization that has been written up again for being the second highest cost healthcare system in the country. And was just ordered by the state to reduce their expenses and their costs by forty percent. Are we going to get a forty percent reduction in the subsidy that we give them for no reason? Other than they have an office here and they're not even there half the time. So. Um, just wanted to say those constantly, if you're looking at cost savings and things that you can do to control costs. And while you go ahead and raise taxes and add eight hundred thousand dollars to the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I speak one more time, please? Or no, if I go into the thing. Okay, my name is Valerie Clarkson. My address was four oh three state row thirteen. Um, I know I sent a email to you. But I know the police department, we can hire a lot of guys. And women. And they go for training, they have a playing field and stuff. They come back. They might stay a couple of months and then they get hired at another town for this task. We need to come up with some type of agreement with to stay for two, three years. If they don't, then they'll have to reimburse the city back for that playing field. Thank you. So that's good. Thank you.
Any comments from council? Again, I just want to reiterate uh, how much hard work has gone into the several uh, considerations that we had this evening. And uh, things are moving along, but they don't move along without a lot of hard work. And we really appreciate that. Our next regular meeting is uh, October the first, Wednesday, October the first. Meeting is adjourned.